This meeting in the Rolling Meadows City Council is hereby called to order. Would everyone please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The clerk will please call the roll.
Canon?
Here.
Pranah?
Here.
Majikis?
Here.
Judd?
Here.
Baner?
Here.
Diastis?
Present.
Veenbos?
Here.
Seven present and none absent. A quorum is present this evening. Therefore, members of the audience are reminded that these proceedings are being videotaped for current and future broadcast over the city's cable television channel. The first item on the agenda this evening is a motion to approve the minutes of the last city council meeting on October 13th. Is there such a motion? Ms. Majikis has made the motion and it has been seconded. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? The clerk will please call the roll.
Pranah?
Here.
Yes.
Yes.
Minutes approved.
Majikis?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
Diastis?
Sure.
Veenbos?
Yes.
Canon?
Here. Also, yes.
With seven in favor, we think, and none opposed, the minutes are approved. Under the mayor's report this evening, I've got a good one and a bad one. The good one is driving home this evening on the National News Radio on CBS. They were reporting that our hometown corporate citizen, our biggest employer, and all-around good friends over at Northrop, their nationwide company has secured this great big contract to produce the next bomber that's going to be built for the United States, the first one in decades. And so, they were in a competition to get that contract, and so, we congratulate them on being the victor in that contract fight, and we wish them the best as they move forward on their new project. The one that's not so good, last week, when our big brothers and sisters down in Springfield, were down there again to try to do some nips and tucks, aside from the real business that they have of actually getting a budget done, one of the parties in this struggle made a proposal that I think, if the council's not aware of, you might want to hear about, and you might want to let them hear about. As the elephants fight down there in Springfield, and I don't mean one party, I just mean the big folks down there, I have refrained from making blustery and finger-waggy speeches from this microphone, unlike some of my counterparts in other cities have, because certain battles they have to fight, and we have to let them fight them by themselves. But, one of the parties in this argument, last week, suggested that an obscure state agency called the Illinois Finance Authority could make available to municipalities low-cost loans in case the money that is not being delivered to us by the state is impinging our budget somehow or another. If the money they won't give us hurts you too much, they will loan you the money from another pot. Now, when I was informed of this, I thought, there's no way that can be right. Something must have gotten lost in translation. Unfortunately, nothing was lost in translation. And so, I feel the need to take the microphone and say that not only is this idea noodle-headed, it is insulting to municipalities all around the state, who, like us, have run our budgets way better than them, who pass our budgets on time, not months after a constitutional responsibility to get one passed. And then, for them to say, if the money that we won't release to you hurts you too much, we'll loan you, with a low-cost loan, money to get you through, solve your problems, and then nobody needs any loans. You might want to help me echo your thoughts to the folks who represent us in Springfield. That's all I have in the mayor's reports this evening, are their word reports. Mr. Pranah, the second word.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of positive upbeats. I was in these chambers on Friday night, meeting with residents of East Park Apartment. The Rolling Meadows Police Department had put together a meet-and-greet. Chief Dave Scanlon was there, Commander Tom Kudansky, Sergeant Peter Forre, Natalia, Officer Carlos Sanchez. They did a nice job. It was nice to hear what the residents had to say. And representing Crime Stoppers, I told them, that'll be our turn next time to come visit you and your neighborhood. So, I thought I'd bring that along. On Sunday, for those of you who weren't aware, Shannon McNamara, Run-Walk was done. Shannon McNamara was a student at Rolling Meadows High School, who was murdered 15 years ago after she graduated from college, and every year, they do a Run-Walk with scholarship money being raised for students at Rolling Meadows High School. There were about 400 people that showed up. My 5K ain't what it used to be, but, oh, well. And finally, I'm sure Barry will bring this up, but there is going to be a trunk-or-treat from 3:00 to 6:00 at Meadows Christian Fellowship on Saturday afternoon from 3:00 to 6:00. And they are attempting, if the weather's nice, to bring back the car show for that one afternoon. I've been informed that the fire department and the police department will be showing up, and there'll be residents who will decorate cars and be passing out candy. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Further word reports this evening. Then, seeing none, there are no signatories on the sign-in sheet for public comment this evening, so the council can proceed directly to its agenda. There are six items pending for second reading this evening. The first of these is Ordinance A. This ordinance, if adopted, would approve the tax abatement for the 2016 budget. There are certain bond payments that are always paid out of the property taxes, but this annual motion allows them to be paid from other sources. If this motion to abate does not pass, then the property tax levy would have to increase by the amount of the debt service payment amounts that we're asking to pay from other sources. Is there a motion to approve this ordinance? Mr. Baner has made the motion, and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be approved? The clerk will please call the roll.
Majikis?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Veenbos?
Yes.
Canon?
Yes.
Pranah?
Yes.
Seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is hereby declared past. It is our usual practice that every item in for second reading has to have its own reading, and we change that, as far as I'm aware, only once a year, and that's when the special service areas, it's the same concept, just done in three different areas. We have done that in the past. Therefore, the chair asks unanimous consent to consider items B, C, and D, all the special service areas, in one motion for second reading. Is there such a motion? Ms. Majikis has made the motion, and it has been seconded. The chair will simply then say, since it's been moved and seconded, is there unanimous consent? Does anyone object to considering all three ordinances together in one motion? Then, since there is no objection, the chair declares it so, and therefore, the question shall be, shall items B, C, and D, to approve the special service area tax levy for special service areas 2, 3, and 5 be adopted? The clerk will please call the roll.
Judd?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Veenbos?
Yes.
Canon?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Seven in favor and none opposed, those three ordinances are hereby declared adopted. The next item is Item E. This ordinance, if adopted, would amend the code for water sprinkling regulations, as well as plumbing fixtures, to bring the Illinois, excuse me, to bring the Rolling Meadows City Code in line with the Illinois Department of Natural Resources' new requirements. Among these requirements are the water sense plumbing fixtures, and the requirement that no resident shall water their, or shall sprinkle their lawn on any consecutive days. Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance? Mr. Veenbos has made the motion, and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion on the ordinance? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? The clerk will please call the roll.
Baner?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Veenbos?
Yes.
Canon?
Yes.
Pranah?
Yes.
Seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is hereby declared past. The final item in for second reading this evening is Item F. This ordinance, if adopted, would approve an application for an A-2 liquor license for the Ming Hin Cuisine Restaurant located at 1440 Gulf Road. An A-2 liquor license is the most common liquor license for restaurants wishing to serve alcohol. Is there a motion to approve this ordinance? Mr. Baner has made the motion, and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? The clerk will please call the roll.
Diastis?
Yes.
Veenbos?
Yes.
Canon?
Yes.
Pranah?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is hereby declared past. There is a consent agenda for two ordinances in for first reading this evening, however, the chair will take the liberty of removing Item G, and therefore, there is no longer a consent agenda. So, Item G, this ordinance, if adopted, would amend the Home Rule Motor-Fuel Tax for the city of Rolling Meadows, increasing the Home Rule Motor-Fuel Tax by 2 cents per gallon of gasoline sold within city limits. Is there a motion to approve this ordinance? Mr. Baner has made the motion, and it has been seconded. To start discussion, I don't have a significant opposition to this ordinance. I just noticed, when I got back to the committee of the whole after-parent-teacher conferences, that somehow or another, the initial idea that it was brought forward under to increase it by 1 cent per gallon had somehow become 2. Since that time, I went back and watched the replay of the city council meeting. I don't necessarily think it's a bad idea, but as I expressed last week, I still think it's perhaps not the wisest choice. And so, I pulled this idea from the consent agenda in order to allow, if anyone wishes, an amendment to return it to the original 1 cent with which it was proposed. If the council chooses not to do so, the chair will not stand in the way, but, again, I'm not sure that's the wisest action. Mr. Diastis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make an amendment that we move this back to 1 cent.
Is there a second to the amendment?
I have a second.
With a couple of seconds, the motion on the floor is to return the 2-cent tax increase, excuse me, the 2-cent increase to the motor-fuel tax to 1 cent. Mr. Diastis, you're entitled to first comments, if you wish.
Nope. I made all my comments last week.
Fair enough. Mr. Baner, discussion on the amendment only.
Sure. Thank you. I'm not going to support the amendment, just because I know we quibbled last week about, it's certainly not going to be double the $100,000 that 1 cent would give us. Let's even say it's not going to be the $80,000 or $70,000 we threw out last week. If it's $50,000 or $60,000, that's still $50,000 or $60,000 more that we desperately need for our road fund. So, I'm going to support the 2 cents. We're going to be one of the highest around, and I don't know if that's a notorious mark for a suburb. I actually don't think most people pay attention to the rankings of local option gas taxes. I certainly didn't until I saw the summary in the Cow Agenda. And the other thing is, it's the purest form of a user tax, I believe, so I'm going to continue supporting the 2-cent increase. Thank you.
Fair point. Further discussion on the amendment only. Mr. Pranah?
I was one of those last week that did not support going to 2 cents a gallon. I don't want us to be at the higher end if we need to take a look at this again next year, and as we talked, it was a, the law of economics, we knew that 1 cent would get us $100,000. 2 cents, I just don't see, I see it being counterproductive, so I will, I would support returning it down to just a 1-cent increase.
Further discussion on the amendment only. Seeing no further discussion, the question is, shall the ordinance be amended to strike the phrase "2 cents" and insert the phrase "1 cent"? The clerk will please call the roll.
Veenbos?
Yes.
Canon?
No.
Pranah?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Judd?
No.
Baner?
No.
Diastis?
Yes.
With four in favor and three opposed, the ordinance currently stands amended. Is there discussion on the ordinance as it stands? Seeing none, the chair would remind the council it is in only for first reading. Therefore, the question is, shall the clerk move this item forward for second reading? The clerk will please call the roll.
Veenbos?
Yes.
Canon?
Yes.
Pranah?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Seven in favor and none opposed, the clerk will please move this item forward for second reading. The final item in is an ordinance this evening is also in for first reading, is Item H. This ordinance, if adopted, would amend the city code to provide provisions for the flying of drones within the city limits. The state of Illinois has a few regulations already and is working on creating a more extensive list of regulations. However, in the absence of a more extensive list of regulations, the staff has determined that perhaps the city would be wise to create its own set. Therefore, is there a motion to move this item forward for second reading? Mr. Pranah has made the motion, and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the clerk move this item forward for second reading? The clerk will please call the roll.
Canon?
Yes.
Pranah?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Veenbos?
Yes.
Seven in favor and none opposed, the clerk will please move this item forward for second reading. The council will now move to other ordinances that are in for first reading that were not on the consent agenda, and there are six of these items that are all ones that came forward from the employee, excuse me, Advisory Committee. As each one had some level of disagreement expressed, maybe not for passage, but for certain details, it was determined that these items should all stand alone, and therefore, we shall consider them each in order. The first of these is Item I. This ordinance would amend the personnel rules and regulations, specifically Section 14.2, that affects the vacation earnings schedule. Is there a motion to move this item forward for second reading?
So, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Diastis has made the motion, and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion on Item I? Mr. Judd?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just like to make an amendment to, I guess it's Section 1, it refers in two places to 19 years of service, but to make it consistent with the box that shows years of completed service, 20 years. I'd like to make an amendment to make that 20 years, so everything's 20.
Is there a second to this amendment? It has been seconded. Mr. Judd, if you like, you're entitled to first comments for the explanation.
It's basically, just so it's consistent.
The chair would point out that in discussions with Mr. Crumstock, he also said that it probably is correct, that it should reflect 20. The idea being, if 19s aren't changed to 20s, then it sort of kind of means somebody with 19 years and 3 months technically would count by having more than 19 years, but they don't yet have 20. And so, that's the feedback that I received from the manager's office, that there's not an objection to changing the 19s to 20s. Further discussion on the amendment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Pranah?
Sorry. I will not support this. I have, from the very beginning, said this is the wrong way to go, and when I said...
If I might, Mr. Pranah, the discussion at the moment is limited only to the amendments.
Okay. I will not support the amendment.
Oh, fair enough. Fair enough. Further discussion on the amendment, to strike the number 19 in the two places that it appears in Section 1, and replace it with the number 20. Then, if there's no further discussion on the amendment, the question is, shall the ordinance be amended to strike in two places in Section 1, the number 19, and insert the number 20? The chair will ask for ayes and noes. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
The chair believes the ayes have it, and the motion is amended. Therefore, the council returns to debate on the ordinance in general. Mr. Pranah, if you'd like, I'd come to you first.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I have brought this up. I've been on the council for two years, and every time I tried to bring forth the fact that we're losing, being competitive, I was told, I really don't care. When I'm told that we're going to leave, we'll lose people because of, that have industrial knowledge, so let them go elsewhere. So, I feel this is the wrong way to go. I also would like a clarification, because since we're now having, due to the fact that we have one alderman that's been pushing this for a number of years, if we go to the second page, I'm not sure what it is on the electronic page, but it says, whereas the city council wants to amend certain sections of the personnel rules and regulations relating to the accrual of vacation time for certain non-union employees not covered under a collective bargaining agreement. So, do we need clarification from our attorneys? So, now, having set up two tiers, we now have four tiers?
If you'd like clarification from the attorney, we certainly can.
Yes, I'd like to, Mr. Mayor.
I believe it would be accurate to say that now each tier has two sub-classifications of folks who came in early enough to obtain the vacation that is offered currently, and then a second set of people who won't. Is that a sufficient answer, or shall I...
That is, that'll be fine, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. McCall, is that correct, as you see it?
Right. And again, I will not be supporting this at all tonight.
Further discussion of this ordinance. Then, the question is, shall the ordinance be moved forward for second reading? The clerk will please call the roll.
Pranah?
No.
Majikis?
No.
Judd?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Veenbos?
No.
Canon?
Yes.
With four in favor and three opposed, the clerk will please move this item forward for second reading. The next item is Item J. This ordinance would amend the same set of personnel rules and regulations, but now in Section 14.8, regarding vacation accrual limits and transition methods. Is there a motion to move this item forward for second reading? Mr. Baner has made the motion, and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion of Item J? Mr. Ban, or, excuse me, Mr. Judd?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make an amendment to, just to make, again, things consistent with what we just passed on Section 2. I guess it's B, so, electronic page 53, there's two instances for 19, make those 20 as well to keep everything consistent.
Then, the motion on the floor in subsection 2B is to strike the two instances of the number 19 and insert two instances in their place of the number 20. Is there a second to that amendment? It has been seconded, therefore, discussion on the amendment. Mr. Judd, I presume, since it's the same amendment, you don't see a need for further comments?
Correct. Thank you.
Is there a discussion of this amendment?
Is this the handout we received just before?
It is not.
The next one for J?
I believe Mr. Judd has a few, and this may not be the next one, but it will be for Item J, and once we hit that one, I'll make sure to note that for the council.
I will not be supporting this.
Fair enough. Further discussion of the amendment only, to change the number 19 to the number 20 in two different instances in subsection 2B. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
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 The ayes have it, and the ordinance is amended. The council returns to debate on the ordinance as amended. Mr. Judd?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're on Item J, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The other thing, to keep things consistent, again, I'd like to offer the amendment that is on the sheet. It's the same wording as in Ordinance I, or J, which is whatever the ordinance is for N. So, to strike the Section 2, and then the one that we have below it, which basically just makes it consistent, and the wording changes from the maximum accumulated to throughout the anniversary period. So, make that the amendment that's on the sheet.
Is there a second to the amendment? It has been seconded. Therefore, Mr. Judd, do you wish further comments to explain the need?
It's not saying anybody wants clarification, but it's just for consistency across the ordinances.
Further discussion of the amendment only. Mr. Pranah?
First off, I feel it's very disrespectful, once again, to the council. In the two years I've been here, Alderman Judd seems to be able to pop up with things on the night that they are here. I know that if staff was to bring something forward just before a meeting, he would feel a bit disrespected, so I just feel that if he's going to do this in the future, it would be nice that he would let the rest of the council know what he's going on, and I really find it demeaning to the rest of us that you decide you're going to do this at the last moment.
Further discussion of the amendment. Mr. Judd?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wasn't consulted prior to this being published, and I was presented this, just like everybody else on the council, and I'm making an amendment, which is what we're supposed to do. I'm making it so, in my opinion, it's consistent, because we have essentially two things doing the same thing with different wording, and so I just find it's consistent. I don't find that being disrespectful to anybody. I'm not popping it on anybody as well. Thank you.
Further discussion of the amendment? Seeing no further discussion on the amendment, then the chair would ask for a voice vote. The chart that's presented on the paper would simply replace the chart that's in the ordinance, and as Mr. Judd has pointed out, the wording of this chart would match the wording in the chart of another ordinance. Those in favor of amending the ordinance to do so, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
The ayes have it, and the ordinance is adopted. The ayes have it, and the ordinance is adopted. The council returns to debate on the ordinance itself. Mr. Judd?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have one more amendment. You and I spoke about this earlier. I'm not exactly sure. I think we left it as to allow wording to come forward.
That is correct.
So the basic gist of it is, is we originally, and what I've proposed all along, is to go from two and a half times carryover down to one. The way this is worded is to essentially go down to one, and give people three years to accomplish that, and it was more so to go to two, from two and a half to the end of 16 to go to two, end of 15 to go, excuse me, end of 17 to go to one and a half, end of 18 to go to one. It accomplishes the same thing, but it allows for the staff and the employees to be able to do it over a three-year period versus no real scheduled timeframe. So we talked about it, so I'd like to go to what we've talked about in the council, what I've, or the council meetings, and what I've suggested all along is to, at the end of 15, excuse me, at the end of 16, be down to two, at the end of 17, down to one and a half, at the end of 18, down to one, and let, you know, the city attorney and the manager sort out the wording as to how that needs to be done, versus trying to figure it out tonight for the next, if it passes. Thank you.
Is there a second to this amendment? It has been seconded. The chair would point out that Mr. Judd is correct. He did let me know this afternoon that it was his intention to make this amendment as well, and I suggested to him that if the amendment passes, we let the staff determine the wording. It is an idea that he did express at the committee of the whole, and so I think folks have heard of it before, but it gets a little complicated to then say, "The three years needs to be down to two times the amount, and then at the second year, down to one and a half." I believe that is best left in the hands of the staff, as to how to craft that wording, if that's the way the council wishes to go. And so I suggested a slightly unusual course of saying, "Let's make an amendment, see if it flies, and if it flies, then the staff can determine the exact wording that would make this schedule happen." So he is correct. When he approached me this afternoon, that was my suggestion, to do the ordinance this way, and let the professionals do the work. Is there discussion on the amendment only? Mr. Prina?
I have another amendment to add, but we have to, until this gets done correctly.
Correct. Once we're through with this amendment, anybody else is also free to offer amendments as well. Any discussion on this amendment? Then seeing none, the chair will ask for a voice vote. All those in favor of asking the staff to bring this back for second reading, with an amendment that would add an additional paragraph to the end of section three, that would codify the idea that was proposed before, that instead of just saying sometime over the three-year transition, people have to be down to their annual allotment, it would actually step down in equal increments. Those in favor of this amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No.
The chair is in doubt on that one. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Majikis?
No.
Judd?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
Deastis?
Yes.
Beanbas?
No.
Cannon?
Yes.
Prina?
No.
With four in favor and three opposed, the ordinance is further amended. Mr. Prina, if you'd like, I can come to you, I'm sorry, Mr. Judd, those are-
That's all I had, thank you.
Mr. Prina, if you'd like, I can come to you next.
Well, I'm on a sinking ship, but I'll still go after it. During those conversations, I had brought up five years as a transition period.
That is correct.
So, can we put forth an amendment to make it five years instead of three years?
Is there a second to that amendment? It has been seconded. Mr. Prina, if you'd like, you're entitled to first comments to explain the reasons for five instead of three.
Well, there's going to be a period of transition here, not only for the employees, and I don't want the employees to be hurt, but it's also a transition period for what the city is going to have to pay out during that period, and that is not something that was discussed with this, about how many hundreds of thousands of dollars this will cost us over a three-year period, so if we're going to do this, do it over a five-year period for the benefit of both.
Is there further discussion on the amendment only? Mr. Deastis?
I'd like to know what this is, by, if we have to pay everybody out, what's this going to cost the city? And I'd like to know how, how we're going to spread that out over the five years. That way I can tie it into the amendment.
I follow you, I follow you. However, I do not know the answer to the question. Mr. Crumstock, is staff prepared to answer a question of ballpark dollar amounts, or is that something?
Right, in, back in July, when we were looking at this, it was roughly $350,000 that we were looking at, but again, that also included everybody that we were looking at, so that has changed a little bit. So use $300,000 potentially for that payout.
So then as clarification for at least myself, and maybe for Mr. Deastis and the council, does that mean that dollar figure, depending on the action of the council, could be spread over three years or over five years?
Yes.
Or would it be two different numbers if five is chosen instead of three?
No, it's still that number that we were looking at back in July.
All right. Mr. Deastis, is that a satisfactory answer to your question?
That's, that's fine, yeah.
Okay. Further comments on the amendment?
I'm going to support the amendment, because I don't think we have put $300,000 anywhere in the budget. And as far as I can tell, if we did it over three years, that's an extra $100,000. If we do it over five years, something less than that. And I think that might change the complexion of the budget a little bit. So I will support the five years at this point, and hopefully look at it further for the second reading.
Further discussion of the amendment only. Seeing no further discussion of the amendment only, the question is, shall the ordinance be amended to change the three-year transition period listed in section three to a five-year transition period? The clerk will please call the roll.
Judd?
No.
Baner?
No.
Deastis?
Yes.
Beanbas?
Yes.
Cannon?
No.
Prina?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
With four in favor and three opposed, the transition period is now amended to read five years instead of three. Based on the spirit of the amendment that was recently offered, Mr. Prina, if you have no objection, I will simply give direction to the staff, that as they write a structured step-down, that they, with the feedback of the employee advisory committee, can choose what should the step downs be over the course of five years instead of three. It might not be as neatly packaged as two, one and a half, and one. It might be some odd decimals. It might be as neatly packaged as saying two by the end of year two, and one and a half by the end of year four, and one by the end of year five, but that'll be left up to their discretion. Is that in the spirit of your amendment, sir?
That's in the spirit, and I trust staff explicitly.
Mr. Crumstock, do you consider that sufficient direction for the crafting of the still-yet-to-be-crafted amendment? Fair enough. Then the council returns to general debate on item J. Are there further comments on item J? Mr. Deastis?
Okay, so, I, I think I'm very much in favor of limiting the accrual. I don't know if I am in favor of forcing people to take, take this or pay them out. So I still see, I mean, for tonight, I'll support the way it's written now, but I'm not sure if, if I, I mean, I see two different things here. One of them I'm okay with, and one of them, not so much. So I guess I want to hear what the rest of the council has to say.
Understood. Further comments on this ordinance by the council, perhaps in response to the statements, or perhaps your own? Mr. Judd?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would only offer a question as, if we take an accrual from whatever number to whatever number, I would think there's only two ways to do it, either have the employee take it or cash payout. I don't know what else. I'd be happy to listen to any other suggestion you might have, but I don't know what else. You know, they've already got it, we can't just say, "It's just gone." You know, they've, they've got it, so we gotta either have them take it or cash payout. I don't, I don't-
Or let them keep it.
But that defeats the purpose of the accrual.
No, they just, it doesn't accrue anymore. So you're two, you're offered two options, pay them out or take it. The third option is, they can keep it right now, they've got it, they just, at this point, they can't accrue anymore. I mean, that to me would be another option.
It is, but that's not something I would support.
Well, that's okay, but that is another option.
Understood. Further comments on item J? Mr. Prina?
I would support Alderman Deastis's suggestion there. I really don't like the way the ordinance is written, and I don't think, in the long run, it does any good, but you take what you can, and if this works, it works. It doesn't hurt the employees. It hurts them less than it will.
Further discussion of the ordinance? Then seeing none, the question, oh, Mr. Deastis?
Yeah, I haven't made an amendment right now.
Correct.
I'm just saying that there is another option, that we can approve this now, and consent for the first time, and then we can come back after, anybody can come back after they've had time to think about it, and see if there is that other option to say, "Okay, you can't accrue anymore, beginning immediately, but whatever you have accrued, you can keep."
That is correct.
And see, and, because I need to, as we talked it out, I was like, "Okay, that is an option, but is it a good option, or is it a bad option, one of the pros and cons?" And I haven't thought it through, so I'll probably ask the manager for his opinion at some point in time, whether next week, to see what his thoughts are on that.
Further discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the clerk move this item forward for second reading? The clerk will please call the roll.
Baner?
Yes.
Deastis?
Yes.
Beanbas?
No.
Cannon?
Yes.
Prina?
No.
Majikis?
No.
Judd?
Yes.
Four in favor and three opposed, the clerk will please move this item forward for second reading. The next item is item K. This ordinance, if adopted, would also amend the personnel rules and regulations, now in section 15.2, to allow the establishment of a sick leave bank. Is there a motion to move this ordinance forward for second reading?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Deastis has made the motion, and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall this ordinance be moved forward for second reading? Clerk will please call the roll.
Deastis?
Yes.
Beanbas?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Prina?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
Seven in favor and none opposed, the clerk will please move this item forward for second reading. Item L is next, also amending personnel rules and regulations, now in section 18.2, to allow the city manager to create a form of merit pay plan. Is there a motion to move this ordinance forward for second reading? Mr. Beanbas has made the motion, and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Mr. De, no, that, Mr. Deastis?
I am usually in favor of merit pay plans. I just, I mean, I just want to know, I guess, is this in lieu of steps or colas, or is this in addition to those?
It is my understanding that, as written, this would be in addition to both of those items.
So-
Mr. Crumstock, is that correct? Mr. Crumstock is not at his assent.
Okay, so, so then, people would continue to get step raises, they continued to cola raises, and now we're going to add merit raises on top of it?
That is correct.
Because it would be in addition.
The only thing I could offer is that this is a group of people that the council has chosen, I believe twice in the past, to not do a cola raise, and so sometimes those cola raises don't happen. The other is that once somebody gets through the steps, there are no further steps. So with those caveats, the answer to your question is yes.
Okay.
Further discussion of the ordinance? I'm sorry, Mr. Deastis, you still have the floor if you wish.
Just wondering, will we see any kind of thought process before we pass this on a second vote, or are we, I mean, just saying, we do it and let the manager use his discretion?
I believe the intention listed here is that no such feedback would not be provided by the second reading, however, it would be provided by the manager before the plan that he devises takes effect. Mr. Crumstock, is that your understanding as well?
That is correct, and it's also one of those things they would see in the budget, so.
Fair enough, because if it comes with a dollar amount, the dollar amount would have to be in the budget. Is that a sufficient answer to your question?
So the council still has an opportunity to say yea or nay?
Yes, that when the proposal from the manager comes forward-
Right.
-he would present it to the council, probably in the form of a staff report, that the council could respond to and say, "We'd rather see this." Further discussion? Mr. Prina?
As I, as I read through this, this is section, section one, "The city manager will, the merit plan resources shall be determined." "The city manager shall be responsible for the establishment and administration of a merit pay plan for all non-union and non-sworn employees, with the input of the assistance of the department heads." So presently, we now have a union on books, so this would not apply to them, correct?
That is correct. That is correct. It would not apply to that classification of employees. Further discussion of the ordinance? Then seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be moved forward for second reading? The clerk will please call the roll.
Beanbas?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Prina?
No.
Majikis?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
Deastis?
Yes.
With six in favor and one opposed, the clerk will please move this item forward for second reading. The next item on the agenda is item M, also amending personnel rules and regulations, now in section 18.8, regarding the longevity bonuses that are paid to city employees. Is there a motion to move this ordinance forward for second reading? Mr. Baner has made the motion, and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Mr. Judd?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer the amendment that was passed out.
Fair enough. The council can see the amendment, as it was printed on paper. Is there a second to the amendment? It has been seconded. Therefore, Mr. Judd, if you don't mind, since this is kind of the same as the last time Mr. Judd did approach me this afternoon and signal his intent, and as we were going back and forth, I suggested to him that the amendment offered here, when it comes for second reading, if it passes, does not need to be in the form of this lengthy and cludgy chart. It's just, again, wordsmithing the idea of, starting at 10 years, you get $1,000, and then it increases $100 for every year, and then it stops at 25. The idea is just to see if the amendment flies, and then work on the wording, and it was my opinion that a chart that looked like this would be more readily understandable to people who are being hit with something the day of the meeting, than to try to have to figure out what a word description of this chart would say. So I did assist him in this manner, hoping to improve the clarity, since, since we're talking same-day service here. to figure out what a word description of this chart would say. So I did assist him in this manner, hoping to improve the clarity since, since we're talking same-day service here. So having said that, is there discussion of the amendments? Mr. Judd, you're entitled to your comments, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Pranay. Part of my reasoning is, is that, you know, obviously, I wanted to go from a percentage to a dollar amount, and, you know, we never really came to any clear understanding or, you know, where numbers came up, either from the EAC or from, you know, I think this was just suggested and wasn't really per se shot down. Nobody really said, no, I won't do that. But my basis is that, two reasons. Number one, the difference between 15 years and 25 years, I think we've all come to the agreement that people being here for a period of time, you know, have more knowledge about not only the city, but the things going on and whatnot. And I would suggest that that value has more than, you know, a $500 difference. So I think that, you know, if we start with 10 years and basically go $100 a year and cap out at 25, anybody that's been here for a long period of time, you know, they still have that same $2,500, you know, and it basically, each year as compared to waiting, you know, for 10 years, you know, 11, 12, 13, you don't get anything. This would make it so that you get a little bit of money every year, because obviously you're gaining more knowledge every year that you're here, you know? And I think that just seems to make more logical sense than, you know, randomly picking numbers, and I'll be the first to admit, I did it as well, but it was just trying to get the conversation going. So this, you know, as I talked to a few people, this seemed to make more logical sense, you know, along the way, so that's why I'm proposing it. Thank you.
Further discussion of the amendment only. Mr. Pranay?
Once again, I would have appreciated some notice or head time for the staff. This does seem to be a habit, and I find it very disappointing at the last moment that this could not have been turned out on a Friday and given to everybody. Once again, my opinion, I still feel it's disrespectful, because this is not the first time this has happened.
Further discussion of the amendment? Mr. Diasus?
I see what the amendment is, and I see what has originally been proposed. I guess, can, can you share with me what we're currently doing, so I can look at all three and then make a decision?
Well, that is a point that I plan on making as well. Mr. Crumstock, can you help us with the exact numbers as it stands right now? The percentages as they stand are?
1%, 2%, and 3%.
At 10, 20, and 30? Or 10, no, it can't be 30.
Fred's pulling the.
Mr. Vogel, we'd appreciate the help.
Thank you, Mayor, and I just so happen to have brought mine with. As of 10 years of service, the percentage is 2.25%.
Okay.
At 15 years, it is 2.5%. At 20 years, it is 2.75%. And at completion of 25 years of service becomes 3.0%.
Fair enough. Thank you, sir, for that information. Mr. Diasus, is that a sufficient answer to your question?
And it's a percentage of?
The base salary.
The base salary.
Correct.
So it would be, so it currently is different for every individual, theoretically.
Theoretically. Different steps would make that true. I believe if you have two employees in the same job classification who have the same number of years, it would be same for them only.
Right.
But you're right, there would be a wide range across the board currently under the current system. Correct.
Mr. Crumstock, can you just give me a, an off-the-cuff number? Take our, take the lowest-paid individual on staff for 10 years, and I don't need an exact number, and 2.25% of that is what? I mean, I'm just trying to get a feel for whether $1,000 is a good number or 1,750 is a better number.
Well, as, as we try to get some kind of a ballpark.
Yeah.
I would just say that my own comments on the item are along those lines, that no matter what that exact number is, I'm certain that this has to be less. And my own take on it is that I believe the intention of going to dollar amounts served a particular purpose, but I don't think the intended purpose was to significantly reduce the longevity pay that people are currently getting. And while I certainly understand the idea of taking steps like these, something like working backwards with $50 increments would not have the same effect of actually reducing people's longevity pay, perhaps maybe starting at 17 something or whatever and moving upward in 50. There's other ways to skin the same cat.
And I guess that's where I'm going to, is that, I mean, I see a logic there.
There is.
But I don't know if that's, if, if the starting point is right, or, I mean, we know the ending point is right, but I don't know, you know, like you said, maybe you start at the top and work your way backwards, as opposed to saying, we start with 1,000, which is already $750 less than, and, okay, as far as it goes on the amendment, I'm going to vote against. I have no more questions at this point in time.
Further discussion of the amendment only. Mr. Baner?
Thank you. I also, I get the idea behind this, and it's, if our theory here is, based on increase, ever-increasing knowledge, you know, we'll increase yearly the longevity bonus, I'm kind of like Alderman Diasus, though, starting with 1,000 on the face of it just looks pretty bad. I can't quite remember the reasoning behind the start point of 1,750 and the, and the ending at 2,500. I can't remember if that was from the EAC to keep, to keep the, the transition from percent to dollars in the ballpark of what?
Well, I can tell you from a read-through twice of the minutes, that particular set of numbers did come from the council, and the, the stretch from sort of, here was the council's first idea, here was the employee advisories committee's suggestion for the numbers. You know, at one point, the start was proposed at $2,250, I believe, because it was 2.25% of $100,000 salary, and the council said, wait a minute, we understand the idea of if this is going to be locked in place for a while, you want to go forward, but that's just too high, because not everybody's making 100 grand, and so they'll actually, that'll be increasing their longevity. So kind of sort of ball parking, the council scaled it back from at least that proposal. So those numbers were council's, not employee advisory committee's numbers. Is that an answer to your question?
That is, thank you. And, and to be honest, I am kind of, I'm recalling that conversation, and I know we backed it off from what was initially proposed. And I actually, the, I get the thinking behind Alderman Judd's schedule here, but I think it's easy enough to go with what was presented by the EAC. I, I'm sorry, and modified by us.
Right. And I, I could be incorrect, but I believe from the reading of the minutes, there were actually five different sets of numbers, four or five, and the numbers that are presented in the current ordinance that we're discussing amending were simply the last set of numbers that were discussed by the council. So then, further comments on the amendment only? Seeing no further comments, the question is, shall the ordinance be amended to replace the one chart with the second? The clerk will please call the roll.
Cannon?
Yes.
Prana?
No.
Majikis?
No.
Judd?
Yes.
Baner?
No.
Diasus?
No.
Vienbos?
No.
With two in favor and five opposed, the ordinance is not adopted and the council can, excuse me, the amendment is not adopted, and the council continues debate on the ordinance as it stands. Is there further discussion of item M? Mrs. Majikis?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not in support of this. I want it left at the percentage for the employees. I want, you know, we're, I feel like they're getting the shaft, my personal opinion. And you pay for people's knowledge and experience. I want these guys to stick around. I don't want this to be a testing town or training town, and I, I think this affects the morale. I think it affects the work. I know it's affected the guys, the women, everybody, and it, I think it's wrong. So I, I will not support this at all. I want it left the way it is. I think they're entitled to the compensation they deserve. Thank you.
Further discussion of the ordinance? Mr. Pranay?
Well, I would support what Alderman Majikis just said. This is, the two years I've been on this council, this, and part of this EOC, I, I just feel that every time I've suggested anything pertaining to this ordinance, well, if they want to leave, let them go leave. We don't care. I really don't care. Those are the texts of it. And we had an alderman here a few weeks back who proudly said, you know, city of Rolling Meadows, we've always been known for our roads, and I remember we were also always known for our services, and we were also always known for treating our employees fairly. And as a result, because of the push of certain people on this council, we will now have a collective bargaining unit, and in the future, these things will not be in our hands.
Further discussion of the ordinance? Mr. Baner?
I think with all of these, my, my thinking is, I, I'm trying, and I hope I'm not the, the mean-spirited ogre Alderman Pranay was painting in that description, but I got some bad news. There's going to be a new normal in Illinois in general, and it, it's going to be hard to keep people, not only in cities in Illinois, but in the entire state, because, you know, as you mentioned at the beginning, with the, the folks in Springfield fighting over, fighting over money that we don't have, I think it's, I think there's no question, this state is going broke. Our city's done a great job of, of getting back from four, five years ago, when we had a couple weeks of money in our reserve, and, you know, looking back to that in 2011, I remember when I was first elected, we had $237,000 in our general fund. We've come a long way. It's, it's part of our job to be stewards, and I don't think we're, at least speaking for myself, I don't think I'm trampling over city employees when I'm, when I'm supporting or thinking about stuff like this. You know, I, when you talk about Alderman Judd pulling a bad move by, by asking for these last-minute amendments, I was in Iowa all weekend, so I didn't have a chance to read any of this until yesterday, maybe Sunday evening. So, you know, depending on his circumstances, that could have been the deal also, so I, that, that has no, I don't care that these amendments just came up. I can think on my feet, and that's just the way it works sometimes. I mean, we had, we had a ton of reading to do, and these are, these are actually big deals, and I, and I don't take them lightly. I don't know if anybody else does take them lightly, and I understand we're shrinking in a lot of cases what our employees here at the city are, are getting, and it might look like, hey, look, we're throwing them a bone, we gave them a sick pool. And, you know, I could see that, on the surface, this just looks like we're taking away from our city employees, but I, I would rather see it as just trying to be good steward of our city finances, looking at the bigger picture, because we are going to be hit by a lot of difficulties in the future, coming straight from Springfield, but also affecting all Illinois cities. And I'm not saying we're going to be a leader in doing this and looking like bad guys, but when you say we're the training grounds for all the suburbs around us, we might be until they, until they get hit by some financial problems and have to think about things like this. So I don't, I hope I'm not the one who's getting characterized as being the mean guy here, because that's not my intent, but when I support things like this, or when I even bring things like this forward, it's, it's not with that in mind, it's just with trying to keep this city that we all love and, and want to work as efficiently as possible, running on the right track. So, you know, I'm certainly not going to feel bad when I vote yes for reducing compensation or for reducing benefits, because in a lot of cases, I think it's sometimes the only way we're going to emerge unscathed from, from just the state of the state in general. So, sorry for the rant, but, yeah, I, I just, I don't want to feel bad about sitting in this chair and voting yes for stuff that diminishes benefits. Thanks.
Further discussion of the ordinance? Mr. Pranay?
And I have to pray that I keep my patience with this. You mentioned, and Alderman Baner and I have worked on many things together. I think then that staff should just really bring us all their stuff at 4 o'clock on Tuesday afternoons. I think that would be fair also, because I find it very condescending. This has been something that has gone on before. I find it offensive, no one's been willing to speak up about it. If you have something you wish to bring forward, it's presented to us on Friday. As for this, you know what? Staff told you what was going to happen. After we do this, the next time around, it's going to be a bargaining unit. All things that you have, a lot of these things won't even matter, because you won't have a choice, and I won't have a choice in it, because it'll go to arbitration afterwards. I felt all along that there were other ways that we could have trimmed things, but every time I brought something up, really don't care. Let them move someplace else. If it's a testing area, really don't care. So, yes, I'm ranting, and I'm very angry, because I believe, short-term, great, you guys save some money, but long-term, down the road, the services and streets that we talked about, they're not always going to be there, because we're going to be paying more things because of what was done, and because certain aldermen on this council knew and felt they could push around a certain element of our employees, and that's the way I feel, and I'm very saddened that we went that way.
Further discussion of the ordinance? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be moved forward for second reading? Clerk will please call the roll.
Prana?
No.
Majikis?
No.
Judd?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
Diasus?
No.
Vienbos?
No.
You didn't ever call me.
Cannon?
Cannon?
Yes.
And then with four in favor and three opposed, the clerk will please move this item forward for second reading.
No.
No.
Other way around. Sorry, 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 sorry. That's, I'm, quite frankly, I'm debating in my head something, and so I lost my concentration. So with three in favor and four opposed, this item will not be brought forward for second reading. I certainly understand that emotions run high. There is never any need to yell into the microphone. It is unprofessional to do so, and I wish that Alderman would not do that in the future.
I apologize, Mr. Mayor.
It happens to the best of us. Item N, this ordinance, if adopted, would also amend the personnel rules and regulations now in sections 15.2 and 14.2, revising tier-two employees' sick leave accrual limit and vacation accrual administration for consistency with tier-one employee schedule. That's a mouthful. Therefore, is there a motion to move this item forward for second reading? Mr. Cannon has made the motion, and it has been seconded. The chair would like to ask to begin the discussion by saying that the way this came forward was with a perfectly legitimate point that was made at the Committee of the Whole, that if, if 30 days is what's required to get to a certain goal for employees, was it 30 calendar days or was it 30 working days? And the answer was calendar days. And so, in recognition of that reality, that perhaps it need not be 240, the suggestion was made for 180. That seemed to get the acceptance of a majority of the council, and so it was brought forward with the number 180. I do believe that, in the meantime, there has also been another good point made, in that if somebody is in this position, it is certainly likely that they may have already had to take some sick time here or there for a day or two, if nothing else, maybe for just a doctor appointment to see what it is, and that while maybe the number doesn't need to be 240, it also doesn't necessarily need to be 180. I believe that is also a fair point, and so I would like to start by asking specifically if there's anybody who is prepared, that wants to change the number. I believe an argument can be made for 180. I believe an argument can be made for some kind of room in the middle, and I also believe that an argument can be made for 240, because as it was pointed out, if we say there's no monetary value that can be cashed out, then really, what's the harm if the number is 240 and, you know, the, sure, it might be more than they need to get to the 30 days, but if there's no cash value to it, the argument could stand, why does that matter? So I think, before getting into a discussion that will then get sidetracked by talking about the number, it might be best to start by talking about the number, and then when we know where it is, then discussion of the, the subject of the ordinance can happen. So, having said that, does anyone wish to alter the ordinance by proposing an amendment to the number to 180 hours? Mrs. Majikis?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I would like to do that. I would like to amend it, if this goes through, to a minimum of 240 hours, and I see that the EAC has also approved of that number, so I would ask for that amendment to 240.
the motion on the floor is to amend the ordinance by striking the number 180 and inserting the number 240. Ms. Majikis, would you consider those your opening comments on the amendment?
Yes.
Fair enough. Is there further discussion on the amendment only? Mr. Preina?
Actually, I would like to see it higher, but I would support this, because as I did my research on this, I asked our city manager, I believe I M R F, and he can correct me if I'm wrong, is that when you run out of sick days, you get paid at 50%. So, as a result, if we have someone here who has long-term illness, heart attack, stroke, cancer, compared to what was before, this person could weather the storm, or someone who has a family injury, and they had to take time off. Now, I know, we have the group that says, I really don't care, but I guess I do care, that when we do have, we heard them, some council members, make the comment that, you know, we have these employees, and we want to pay longevity bonuses, and we want to do this. Well, the putting of the fact is that, if we're going to be even concerned about our employees, when they hit a tough time, we should be able, they should be able to stay on and be able to come back, and they should not have to find some type of catastrophic consequences, because they didn't have enough sick days or enough time to take care of a spouse. I would support the 240, but I would like to see it higher.
Further discussion of the amendment only. Mr. Diastis?
Okay. Compromise is always a good thing, and I think, I voted for some things tonight, and I voted against some things tonight. Not necessarily to everybody's liking, and this will be another one. What happened to short-term and long-term disability insurance? I understand what you all are saying, but I don't even think 180 hours, I think that's too much, because everybody has the opportunity to buy short-term and long-term disability insurance, whether it's with your employer, or whether it's on an open market. Why should the residents have to pay someone if that someone doesn't want to be proactive and pay for themselves? I'm sorry, I can't support this amendment at anything, for anything, whether it's 240, 180, or 160. It doesn't make any sense to me, when people can buy short-term disability insurance or long-term disability insurance. That's what it's there for, that's what I have to do. My employer doesn't say, oh, well, I'll give you six weeks' worth of pay if you're sick. And if you have a heart attack, you don't take that many weeks off, you take a couple of days and you go back to work. So, I'm sorry, but I don't support this in any way, shape, or form.
Mr. Banjer?
Thank you. Seeing as we started with the EAC recommendation of 720 hours, and I'm not saying we, again, it was thinking out loud at the Cal meeting, not necessarily negotiating down to 180, hitting 240, and being in those ranks of the lowest amounts in the suburbs is fine with me. The main part of this was, sick leave, you know, sick leave is for when you're sick, not to have a cash out at the end. So, I like that component of this. So, 240 hours, I am perfectly fine with. So, I'll support Alderman Majikis' amendment.
Mr. Judd?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. I agree with a lot of what Alderman Diastis said, and we approved a sick bank earlier tonight. And granted, it's only the first reading, but that does exactly what people need. If, you know, if you go over, if you take a couple of days to find out what it is, and you don't have 180 hours, and, you know, you need 24, you know, some of the other, you know, workers or employees can, you know, gladly put into it, as well as the concept of vacation time, or personal time, which they get. You know, the whole purpose of all of this was to, you know, we've heard numerous people complain about the taxes, not only here, but across the state, was to start to reduce the tax burdens that we have. And, you know, we talked about trying to find money for the roads, and we talked about this and that, and nobody wants to raise any taxes. You know, trying to get businesses' license up, nope, nope, nope. Try to get this up, nope, nope, nope. But yet, when it comes to saying, well, let's pay more than we have, or let's increase what we're giving, I mean, you know, the whole purpose of going from 3% to a dollar amount was to be able to start to budget a little bit closer, number one. Number two, as raises continue to go up, and people are making anywhere from 90,000 to 100,000, 110,000, 120,000, 130,000, those numbers go up as well, you know, so let's try to put a cap on that for the residents. I don't see what's wrong with that. You know, that's what we're elected for. We want to make the employees happy. I get that. We don't want them to go, I get that. But, you know, the argument can be made, well, let's just give every employee a $10,000 raise to make sure they don't go anywhere. At what point do we start saying, we're here to take care of the funds of the residents? Just like, you know, Mr. Mayor, you started off the night complaining about, you know, the shenanigans down in Springfield, that we won't give you the money, but we'll loan it to you. You know, their whole purpose in Springfield should be the same thing. What's best for the residents of Illinois? And if things need to change, they need to change them. Does that mean some things are going to get cut? It should. Does that mean some taxes are going to go up? It should. But, you know, I think that, you know, just staying that we're, you know, we want to give, 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 so we can be the highest, I mean, we can be the highest-paid employees in the area, not a problem. We can be the best benefits, no problem. But at what point do we say, you know, we were put in place by the residents. We technically work for the residents. We're going to do the best we can to keep the employees happy, but we work for the residents. And I think that's been lost on some people, at least in my opinion. And I think that, you know, they came to us and said, we have a problem, this is what we need to solve. And so, we're trying to solve it. And it seems like anytime we try to solve it, it's never enough. And, you know, I think, you know, as Alderman Diastis said, you know, even 180, you know, anybody, or not anybody, but a lot of people in the private sector have to purchase insurance. I'm not sure why that's lost on public-sector workers. Not just, it's not, you know, just City of Rolling Meadows, it's the state, it's the county, it's, you know, any government agency you want to pick. You know, and at what point do we say, the costs are exceeding, and I guess we can just keep raising taxes on the residents, but at some point, the whole house of guards is going to come down. It's not going to happen today, it's not going to happen tomorrow. But I think we're seeing it in Springfield, when you've got $100 billion, we have to come up with pensions. They're doing nothing. You know, at least the city here, we said, okay, we're going to do the right thing, and we've gone and said, we have to raise taxes to fund our pensions. You know, the state of Illinois has done nothing. The federal government, 18 trillion in debt. They don't care either. But, you know, I think you got to start somewhere, and, you know, we represent the residents, and we work for them. We want to keep the employees as happy as we can, and we want to make good for them, but it's not, give everybody a $10,000 raise, so nobody goes anywhere. Thank you.
I will open to other folks for discussion, but I feel the need, at this point, to make a quick clarification. The statement was made that we up here at the dais work for the residents. I would point out with a strong voice and a strong finger, everyone in the City of Rolling Meadows, staff, administration, police department, fire department, Public Works, finance department, community development, and everybody else, we all work for the residents. And to make that claim of only the seven people sitting up here is one of the least sensitive things I think I've heard up here at the dais. And so, I feel the need to point that out. Further discussion among the council. Mr. Judd?
Mr. Mayor, I don't think I said that the employees don't work for the residents. All I said was that we work for the residents. That's all I said. I didn't say the employees don't. Obviously, they do. Thank you.
I believe everybody heard what you said. Further discussion. Mr. Preina?
Mr. Mayor, I will second what you said, because I heard a lot of things said over there, and yes, we are stewards of the money that our residents give us. However, Rolling Meadows has always been known for its service because of its employees. Everyone here, if there's a snowstorm, talks about, hey, our guys were out on the street, what a wonderful job they did. Gee, you know what? We had a storm. Man, Public Works did a great job cleaning everything up. We were really great. And it brings value, that service, that hard work by those employees, brings value and service to all the residents. And it also helps with our property values, because when people come into Rolling Meadows, we have a positive reputation, and our guys go above and beyond. And what I'm saddened through this and the whole process, is through the years, I've watched the number of hours that are volunteered and donated, volunteered and donated by the employees in this city. And because of what I feel have been attacks on these employees, I see that going away. You can be in the private sector, great, and if you have to buy short-term health insurance, so be it. But to get the value that we want here, we're going to ask employees, you come to our city, and you have to pay a little extra to come here, when all we're trying to do is be competitive with the people that are here. And I think it's ironic that if any of you read the newspaper, the UAW just settled, and Tier 2 and Tier 1 are going away in the private sector.
Further discussion of the ordinance. Mr. Diastis?
Mr. Mayor, I move, a motion will move the question.
Previous question has been moved. It is not debatable, and it requires a two-thirds vote. We don't use previous question here very often, so for those who are not entirely familiar, it is a motion to end debate. All those in favor of the previous question, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, and the previous question passes. Therefore, the council will vote on ordinance N. The question is?
This is the amendment.
Oh, I'm sorry, on the amendment. Sorry. Correct.
240.
To 240. Thank you. I apologize. The council will vote on the amendment, changing the number 180 to 240. The Chair also stands in favor. Those in favor, please, let's do it this way. The clerk will call the roll.
Majikis?
Yes.
Judd?
No.
Banjer?
Yes.
Diastis?
No.
Veenbos?
No.
Cannon?
No.
Preina?
Yes.
With three in favor and four opposed, the ordinance as proposed does not pass, and therefore, the ordinance stands as written in the packet. All right. Well, we know the number now, unless somebody wants to shoot the middle, they're entitled to do that as well. Further discussion of item N. Mrs. Majikis?
Yes, I'm willing to give a little on that 240, to come bring it amended to 220. I think it just shows a little more fairness to both sides.
Is there a second for an amendment to move it to 220?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
It has been seconded. Is there discussion of the amendment alone? Mr. Banjer?
I have a strong feeling that the people who are voting against the previous amendment, which we'll find out shortly, I suppose, were doing it because it wasn't the 180, and it wasn't nothing, so just, we can call it, I guess. Thanks.
That is possible. Further discussion of the amendment only. The Chair would stand in favor of the amendment, believing it's a reasonable position to say that 180 might be the minimum, but that the minimum may not get somebody through. I know that I happen to work in a place of employment, that is a public-sector place of employment, but I also worked at a place that was a private-sector employment. They had a sick bank in both places, and I can tell you from people that I worked with at both places, that they do not always overlap. If they do always overlap, there would not be a need for two separate ordinances. And so, I think it is a reasonable position to say that the minimum might not meet everybody's needs. Further discussion of the amendment? Then seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be amended to strike the number 180 and insert the number 220? The clerk will please call the roll.
Judd?
No.
Banjer?
Yes.
Diastis?
No.
Veenbos?
No.
Cannon?
No.
Preina?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
With three in favor and four opposed, this amendment also fails, and the ordinance stands as written. Is there further discussion on the ordinance? Mr. Diastis?
Mr. Mayor, could you explain to me what will happen if this ordinance, in its present state, does not pass?
Then the status quo would remain?
So, if there are four people who vote no, and three vote yes, then 80 hours stays, and not 180?
That is correct.
So, I guess everybody needs to deliberate their vote carefully.
I hope that everyone always does.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Further discussion of the ordinance. I think I would add on to Mr. Diastis's comments by saying that if the ordinance fails to move forward, then what I described earlier as perhaps the largest sticking point with the folks who worked for us over the last five years, will see no improvement whatsoever. I would consider that a very bad outcome. Further discussion? Then the question is, shall the ordinance be moved forward for second reading? The clerk will please call the roll.
Banjer?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Veenbos?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Preina?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
Seven in favor and none opposed, the clerk will please move this item forward for second reading. That concludes all the ordinances, but not all of the council's business. The next item would be the warrant, the document that releases all the funds for the obligations that were incurred by the city from October 2nd to October 20th. The amount in for approval is just over $2.3 million, a majority of which is related to the payroll. This unusually high number is the result of two payroll periods coming up in the same warrant period. That is unusual. Therefore, the question is, is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. I'm just catching up a little bit of time. All right. The Chair declares that the warrant is approved. We then move to a motion to reconsider. This goes back to an item that was in a couple of weeks ago, when Mr. Veenbos's chair was vacant that evening. There was a tie vote that was unable to be broken by the Chair, and therefore, before the vote was called, the members who voted in favor changed their votes to no, to allow a motion to reconsider to happen when a full council was present. Therefore, some specific individuals would need to make the motion. Is there a motion to approve Resolution P? Mrs. Majikis has made the motion, and Mr. Banjer has seconded. Therefore, Item P, to approve an amendment for the fund agreement for the Salt Creek Bike Path, to not go back through everything all over again, the low bidder was declared by the state to be ineligible. The state has requirements that say somebody can only do so much work to be in these deals, because they don't want people to overextend themselves. And even though the low bidder said that they felt perfectly capable to fulfill the contract, the state said, no, we think you have too much work on your plate. And the second-lowest bid is in the neighborhood of $100,000 higher. So, with that description, there's a motion on the floor and a second. Is there any discussion of the resolution? Seeing none, the question is, shall the resolution be adopted? The clerk will please call the roll.
Diastis?
Yes.
Veenbos?
Yes.
Cannon?
No.
Preina?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Judd?
No.
Banjer?
Yes.
With five in favor and two opposed, this resolution is adopted. That brings the council to the consent agenda for resolutions. There are only two, therefore, if either is removed, there is no consent agenda. Would any alderman-like items queue or are removed from the consent agenda for resolutions? Would any alderman-like items Q or R removed from the consent agenda for resolutions? Mr. Cannon?
Q.
Therefore, we'll move right to Item Q with the absence of a consent agenda. Item Q, this resolution, if adopted, would award a contract for HVAC professional services. Uh, is there a motion for the adoption of the resolution? Mr. Baner has made the motion, and it has been seconded. Mr. Cannon, you asked that this be pulled. You're entitled to first comment, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I didn't get this pulled because I'm against it. I just would like some more verbal confirmation as to what we're doing here.
Certainly.
And I guess the bigger picture is, um, I know two years ago, we replaced a chiller, and obviously, that's not getting the job done. Can anybody even give us a high-low ballpark figure of what we're looking at when we approve something in this area? I mean, obviously, these guys are going to come in and do a major evaluation of what we have, and my guess is they're going to ask us to replace everything that we have. And we've talked in the past about possibly doing something to City Hall. I guess I'm just looking for some more information. I don't know if it's the proper time to ask or not.
It could be. Uh, if anybody can do it, it is certainly not I. So therefore, perhaps, Mr. Vogt, are you prepared to answer that question?
Technically speaking, no, but administratively speaking, yes. I cannot address a whole lot in terms of the technical aspects of the building and how the heating, ventilating, air conditioning work, other than we continue to have problems that become more significant, the primary one being airflow through the building. And, uh, what we have discussed with this proposed vendor, Clark Deets, is to fully assess all the components in the building. We've walked them through the building. I believe we spent at least a couple, if not several, hours, um, looking at things that we could show them. There's a number of things in this building, uh, for various reasons, including remodelings that we can't see that are up in places that are difficult to get to, but to the best of their ability with certain professional assumptions, they put this proposal together for us to, um, give us an assessment. And, uh, once we get the assessment, we'll know far more than we do in terms of how to proceed next, in terms of what to recommend to look at, whether there's certain components that we should focus on, whether it's close to all of them or, um, somewhere in between. So without doing the study, staff is not capable to, um, do the, um, assessment. We don't know enough about...
Mr. Cannon, is that a sufficient answer?
The units from the nineteen eighties and nineteen nineties and all the modifications that have been made.
Fair enough.
I guess that's good answers. Yeah, well, it is, I guess it is what it is. I'm not, you know, I guess I'm just worried about us spending a ton of money redoing it, but I, I want the employees to be comfortable, so.
Understood. Further discussion of the resolution? Then the question is, shall the resolution be adopted? The clerk will please call the roll.
Diastis?
Yes.
Veenbos?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Pranah?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
Seven in favor and none opposed, this resolution is adopted. The final item in under council business is Item R, this resolution, if adopted, would award a contract for seasonal street sweeping. Is there a motion to adopt? Mr. Baner has made the motion, and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the resolution be adopted? The clerk will please call the roll.
Veenbos?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Pranah?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
Diastis?
Sure.
And with seven in favor and none opposed, this resolution is also adopted. Uh, under other business and reports, uh, I unfortunately have no appointments nor proclamations this evening. Um, we were hoping to make an appointment, uh, but there was a little bit of technicality tidying to do, and so I expect to bring forward an appointment to the Vehicle Replacement Committee in a couple of weeks. Uh, does the city clerk have a report?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Then we move to city staff reports, starting with Mr. Crumstock.
Obviously, in front of you, um, we do have many items of interest. The first one that I do want to remind people is this Saturday is actually Halloween, so the trick-or-treat hours that we have assigned for the city of Rolling Meadows are from 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And, uh, starting tomorrow, if, uh, someone collects a piece of candy that they have a concern about, we will have the barrel out here. You just have to throw it in there, and we'll dispose of it correctly. And actually, what was mentioned earlier tonight, uh, Meadows Christian Fellowship will be doing their trunk or treat. Um, that's from three to six. That's at, again, off of Kerchoff Road. All are welcome to come. Obviously, with leaves falling and, as I can hear, the rain is pouring and bringing down more, um, we do have a friendly reminder to people, please do not dump or blow your, um, leaves into the streets, um, and again, especially down the sewers, um, does become an issue. And obviously, what we did tonight, um, we do have, um, two street sweepers that work throughout the community throughout this fall period. One is obviously the city of Rolling Meadows Street Sweeper, the other one is the contractor. The contractor, we do give a magnetic seal, so it does look like a city of Rolling Meadows Street Sweeper, but they do have their own designated areas that they do work throughout the, um, obviously, the city. Reminder that Sunday, November 1st, daylight savings time, ends, so please fall back so Monday you're not late to work. Um, and again, change your clocks, um, please remember to change your batteries and your smoke detector, detectors and carbon monoxide detectors that will help the fire department. And then Monday, November 2nd, early refuse set-out begins. Place refuse at the curb no earlier than 3:00 PM the day prior to pickup. And obviously, what we did last meeting, and it actually expires at the end of tonight, but as part of the city's ADA transition plan, as, as I mentioned before, has already been mentioned, but the city of Rolling Meadows is, um, really providing equal access to public programs, activities and services, um, to all members in the community, and is developing an ADA transition plan in accordance with Title II of the Americans with Disability Act of 2010. As a component of that development and ADA transition plan, we obviously have to make public statements, but the city of Rolling Meadows is still soliciting public comments, and again, it expires today, so that would be October 27th, when we bring it down tomorrow morning. But it is related to any challenges that pedestrians may experience in the city of Rolling Meadows. Um, it is an effort to provide public comment. It is an easy process. There's a downloadable part on the city website that does talk about that, and as we said, it is all part of our plan that we are updating and dealing with. Obviously, because this is one of the last meetings that we have, um, before, but we do have one more, but I do want to mention that City Hall will be closed on Wednesday, November 11th, even though we have a city council meeting on, um, November 10th, um, and it will be in recognition for Veterans Day. Please remember to thank a veteran, and regarding that Wednesday, regular refuse rights routes will be observed, meaning that there is no delay in any kind of pickup during that week. And then the Friends of the Rolling Meadows Library will be having another sale, this fall sale at the library at 3110 Martin Lane will be conducted on Friday, November 13th from 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Saturday, November 14th from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, and Sunday, November 15th from 1:00 to 4:00 PM. And obviously, there's all kinds of bargains. You have to go through all the boxes and everything else like that. And then obviously, starting Monday, you will see that, um, Rolling Meadows has partnered with the US, um, United States Marine Corps Reserves to collect toys for children in need through their Marines Toy for Todd program. So again, you will see the boxes here at City Hall and the library starting, um, Monday, and that's November 2nd. So if residents would like to participate, please deliver a new unwrapped toy to those drop boxes. And this actually goes until Monday, December 7th. One thing that's not on this, um, item, but it will be showing up again, um, we will be doing the Holiday Light Recycling Program again, and if you saw outside of City Hall, the boxes have already been delivered by Elgin Recycling, and that program will go all the way through 2016 in February, and we'll have more about that coming up, too. And obviously, because it's the last meeting of the month, um, we do the summary of each of the committees. So for November, Economic Development will be meeting, um, Tuesday, November 3rd at 6:00 PM. Items scheduled for that meeting to, um, actually consist of the Economic Development Consultant doing an update and discussion. Content, we will be doing an update on Continental Towers, 2850 Gulf Road. We will be doing overall, some business updates, um, and there's been a lot since the last meeting. And then there's some open items that we'll be having in the Chamber of Commerce. Also, that night, Tuesday, November 3rd at 7:30, if you'd like to join us, the Plan Commission will be meeting, and they actually have three issues hearings. Um, one is a special use application to allow permanent outdoor storage at 4,001 Industrial. That's Richards Building Supply that will be coming for that. Special use application to allow outdoor seating servicing alcohol at 1480 Gulf Road, that's Bulldog Ale House, and that's the old Chili's. And three, an amendment to sign variant per Ordinance 15-16 at 3245 Kerchoff Road, and Lexington Homes is making that. And the zoning board, they did not have any petitions, so they will be canceled for the month of, uh, November. With that, those are the items of interest.
Then the new business report is next. Mr. Crumstock.
There's actually six of them. Um, the one notable that I would actually mention out of the six is Los Dos Amigos on 2216 Algonquin Road. That is a new restaurant. Um, he's laughing at that one, but...
Well, I believe it would be Los Dos Amigos. You don't switch to English just for the number, but, uh, you know, these are minor technicalities.
But, um, that one would be the one, and again, it's, uh, 2216 Algonquin Road.
Then Mr. Crumstock gets off the hook as we turn to Mr. Vogt for the Staff Traffic Advisory Report.
Thank you, Mayor. The, uh, October meeting was held earlier this month. Uh, five things to bring to council, um, for highlighting, um, first being Wilkie Road, that being the, um, section from Central to Clarny Court. A resident requested looking at that for additional signage needs. After consideration and, uh, field observations, Public Works will add a third sign, one in each direction to improve driver awareness. Second item, Old Plum Grove Road, had a, um, concern expressed about weight limit sign needs. There are none posted. We will post those. Um, this municipal code doesn't call for anything unusual there, so the 10-ton weight limit would be applicable for residential area. Also, police department plans to, uh, pursue purchase of, um, a couple of the, what we call portable electronic speed display sign boards for temporary installation to, um, monitor speed limit and concerns in that area. Item three, Quentin Road Speed Limit, um, committee was asked to look at that. The current posting is 35 miles an hour. This road is, um, Cook County Highway Department jurisdiction. Um, traffic review committee, in particular, the city engineer, um, feel that if we do any type of formal study, it may result in a higher speed being, um, a recommendation, so therefore, we recommend taking no action further on it and just leave it at 35 miles per hour as currently posted. Uh, item four, Fairfax Village, we had a resident request if we could, uh, put in a, um, striped line along near the curb to designate a walkway. The width of those roads do not, uh, would not make that safe, and, uh, therefore, the committee does not recommend considering that further. Uh, fifth item, lastly, um, we talked about needing stop bars posted at, um, particular at, uh, the 53 Algonquin Road intersection where we've got the, uh, red light cameras. Fortunately, uh, within a few days of our meeting, IDOT had a contractor out there and restriped everything, so that took care of itself. It's the report for this month.
Mr. Cannon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Fred, on item number two, I'm a little bit confused. Right now, we have a portable, or we don't have a portable, we have a mounted speeds display sign right in front of Plum Grove Junior High. So are these going to replace that?
My understanding is that the...
That's permanently mount right now. That's permanently mounted right now.
The police department will determine the needs in terms of how they would do enforcement if they can use the one that's already there, but, uh, otherwise, I'll defer to Chief Scanlon.
They're small battery-operated, uh, speed signs that, that slow people down through the curves. We've been getting our complaints. They just attach the speed sign...
So you're going to move them farther west, then?
They're just, they're small battery-operated, you know, 30-day, uh, signs that just attach to the post, uh, the speed signs that alert people. We're trying to get people to slow down through the curves where, where we're getting the complaints from the people who don't have the sidewalks, believe it or not, to, to walk on, so they want to try and slow the traffic down.
Right. Fair enough. Thank you for the explanation.
Then the next item is also Mr. Vogt, the Brookwood Status Report.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a business item that has appeared regularly over the past several years at, uh, city council and committee of the whole meetings. Um, most recently, since our last report sometime in 2014, um, city staff, city attorney, city engineer, all met with the Brookwood Homeowners Association at a special meeting in March, um, presented to the HOA our desire to, uh, have a easement granted by them so that, uh, the improvements as proposed to the detention pond could be pursued. Um, at that time, we had some grant money through the state that could be made available for that. The homeowners association at that meeting did not have enough people present to, um, get the necessary signatures for the easement. They continued to work on that. Three months later, in June, informally, we were, um, informed that they thought they had the, um, signatures, but, uh, since June, we have been unable to reach them or their attorneys to be able to confirm that. Um, in July, we received notice from the, um, Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity that the $75,000 grant is being suspended due to the, uh, state budget issues. We have no idea whether that money will be available at some time in the future or not. Um, lastly, we also received a, um, letter notice from some of the Jody Court residents adjacent to the south that they've secured the services of a law firm to represent their interests in, um, the matter of the stormwater at Brookwood. So in short, um, and certainly if council wants more information on the procedures for setting up special service areas, um, staff, city attorney, um, all recommend that, uh, we strongly consider, um, starting the mechanism to establish a special service area. There are a number of hearings and published notices that would have to take place in terms of doing that. It's a somewhat lengthy process in terms of it taking several months, um, but we really see no other, um, way to move forward on this matter without doing a special service area or condemnation or something more, um, serious than that, and all these will take time.
Mr. Diastis?
Mr. Mayor. Have we not danced with this association long enough? Um, I have never been a favorite fan of this, but I know there are other residents, uh, that are affected by this, this, this homeowners association's lack of, um, lack of anything. So my question is, Mr. City Attorney, what's the most expedient way that we as a city can remedy this situation? I don't think that, now that the 75,000 is gone, that this, the rest of the residents need to make this up. I think this is on them and their association and their ownership. What do we, what's the most expedient way for us to resolve a flooding issue to other residents and put it on their backs? Because it's clearly their fault at this point.
Mr. McColl?
The, uh, most expedient way would be to, um, first of all, we need to, we need to acquire the easement through a condemnation or an eminent domain proceeding. Um, and so, uh, my thought initially is to, I've got an appraisal, uh, for that, and, and get a, uh, a letter out to the association, making an offer to acquire that easement based on that appraisal. And then at the same time, the, the most expedient way to proceed would be a special service area. Um, that, uh, that, uh, process would go through, there is a 60-day window where if the majority of the owners and electors within that special service district, which could include the condominium association and the residential areas to the south, file objections, then the city would be prevented from going forward with the special service area for that entire area I've just described. In which case, then, there's a combination, uh, process where you go through the condemnation and a, uh, special assessment, and that goes through the courthouse. Um, and so that would take some time. The, the advantage to the special service area, uh, it amounts to the collection because the special service area tax is collected, uh, by the county with the real estate tax bills and then remitted to the city. The special assessments aren't collected by the county. It would be incumbent upon the city to, to send invoices and bills out for that, make sure they're paid to the extent they're nattered. We have the city to enforce those collections.
Okay. Okay.
That's the most expedient way of going about this.
Okay. Well, it sounds like that's what you all have planned, so I will tell you, I am absolutely opposed to spending $75,000 of resident money to fix this for them when they could have easily gotten that grant and gotten it taken care of. So I'm in favor of doing whatever we have to do as long as it doesn't cost the rest of the residents any more money. And for those people on Jody Court who got an attorney, let them know we're doing all we can do, and if they want to file a suit against this Brookwood, let them file a suit against Brookwood. They can do whatever they want.
Then the next item goes to Chief Franz Groth, the fire station report, number five.
Yeah, you have it in front of you, Mr. Mayor, and I really don't have anything to add, other than it's your timeline moving forward.
Then the council can move to number six, the purchase order disclosures over $2,500. Ms. Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are three purchase orders for city council review at this point in time.
Then finally, number seven, third quarter financials, also Ms. Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council. Before you are the third quarter financial statements, and this would run from January to September 2015, so September 30th. And as we always report that this is on a budget basis, so this would mean that it's on a cash basis, unadjusted accruals, and also unaudited. And what we usually do is we will focus on the general fund and then also mention the major funds such as utilities fund and the refuse fund, and then also kind of headline or highlight some of the items for local government distributed fund revenues as well. In the packet itself, there are lots of detailed notes in the memo, and then also on the income statement for the general fund, the all funds income statement, and then there are some charts as well. We're not going to go through the entire memo because it is in the city council packet, but I will start with the general fund itself, all in from September 30th, which represents 75% of the year. Revenues for the general fund are coming in at 26.2 million, and expenditures are coming in at 22.2 million, with an overage, if you will, a surplus for the year so far. That means, again, some of the accruals from last year are included in this, but all in is 3.9 million year-to-date. What we have done is some analysis on the revenues, so we have brought in a new chart or two just for city council review and for the public as well, looking at about the major revenues for the general fund, which is, represents 47% of all the revenues for the general fund. There is a chart that shows those revenues, and then also the year-to-date. The couple highlights that we want to show you are the red light enforcement fines, building permits, and real estate transfer tax. Specifically for building permits, we've had a number of building permits come in from Lexington Crossing, the work over on Kirchhoff Road for the townhomes, the Arthur J. Gallagher project as well, and then also the work at Continental Towers. There are lots of building permits coming in, and so that would represent much higher than year-to-date budget. In terms of real estate transfer tax, we did have one large transfer tax and several other large ones, but in particular, Sam's Club is mentioned in the report for real estate transfer tax for a one-time of 72,000. Red light enforcement fines also, in which we did adjust that to the projection as well, coming in at about 760,000 for year-to-date as of September 30th. On the expenditure side, and before I turn to local government distributed fund, I would mention that in terms of the expenditures trending in about just under 1% or 2% under budget year-to-date, some of the expenditure items that we would want to mention is the fact that the tax levy is coming in about 99% year-to-date, which is where it should be, and that would mean that the pension funds for police and fire and I M R F are also coming in in terms of expenditure-wise for that as well. And some of the lower expenditure items are some changes in retirements, employment changes moving on, and some other benefit changes. So it is trending on target for expenditures for the general fund. I did want to highlight local government distributed fund revenues. Again, those are shared revenues from the state of Illinois. That really is, they are generated by the municipality, they are flowed to the state of Illinois and then received back to the municipality. Those consist of the income tax, personal property and replacement tax, local use tax. Those three revenues are deposited into the general fund. Then there is the state motor fuel tax, that is deposited into the state motor fuel tanks as we know. Since the issuance of the second quarter financial report and due to the budget impasse, and I know we've mentioned this in the weekly notes, the local use tax, which generates about 430,000 to the general fund, we now have seen a discontinuance temporarily until the state of Illinois' budget is passed, but currently we're about a little over 90,000 as a receivable for local use tax. Again, that's the general fund receivable, and we have some charts on, in the memo itself showing that. We also highlight the motor fuel tax, again, separate from the general fund, but we are showing that we're about three months now, that the amounts have not been vouched, we did receive a notification from Illinois Department of Transportation letting us know as soon as the budget is resolved by the state of Illinois, then they would, as soon as they could, resolve the payments back to the city. So at this point in time, we are just estimating what our accrual is because they have not vouched the amount. Just important for the city council and general public to know as well that we are monitoring this. And as of September 30th, cash available in motor fuel tax is about 80,000. Before I turn over to utilities fund and mention those items quickly, I just wanted to mention that we did do a revised year-end estimate, so within the proposed 2016 budget. Of course, we do a very intense, detailed review of where we're estimated to end for the general fund's ending fund balance. We did take some time to review that and then update that because there was some discussion at last week's committee, the whole meeting, to see maybe where we're at currently. Based on the fact that building permits we're estimating now at about 1.2 million coming in year-to-date, and then also some of the real estate transfer fines, and then also our fees, all of the other types of major revenues as well, like such as sales tax, we've adjusted now and we added that. That is on the detailed income statement. I'm just gonna go back to the end, the bottom-line figure is where in the proposed budget, we were showing about a $1.1 million surplus for the general fund. We're looking at about a $2.2 million estimated revised ending surplus. So I just wanted to highlight that, it is in the detailed notes, but we did take some time to do that. Just going back to the utilities fund and the refuse fund, revenues are on target for utilities fund, coming in just about 2% under budget, and expenditures are trending a little bit lower. When I say a little bit, it's a little bit more than that, it's 20% below budget, and the reason for that is that we're working on the capital. All those invoices continue to flow until next March, actually, for capital. Refuge fund, or refuse fund revenues turning to that fund are fairly stable, on target, and then expenditures are on target as well. We mentioned those major funds for city council review, and the last ending point here is cash and investment statement through, September 30th is coming in at 22.8 million for all cash and investments across all funds, with a footnote that we do pay our debt service payments in November and December, principal and interest payments, EPA loans as well, and that would, obviously, those are the major things that we'll be paying out at the end of the year. And this really, other than that, there are the ending charts at the back of the report as well, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Then seeing no questions, are there matters not on the agenda this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Brainerd.
I need your help with the parliamentary procedure.
Certainly.
I'd like an ordinance brought forward that would say that we are going to go from having two tiers to one tier and brought forth to the council. What's the best way to do that?
I believe you just did, and therefore I don't believe, it would be very hard to craft language if that's the goal simply as stated, to abolish the tiers. Mr. Crumstock, is there any reason why that can't be done for the next council agenda?
Sure, I'll do some wordsmithing, but-
It is a proper request, and if that's what you'd like, it can be prepared.
Thank you. My next item is directed to Chief Scanlon. They send out the notes every week, and I did notice that we spent a lot of time, money, and energy, and we have a lot of, seems to be there's a lot of transition. Can you give us an update on the training and how it's affecting the police department right now?
The, there's been a tremendous amount of turnover in the police department due to retirement since 2011. I think half of our whole patrol unit has got less than four years on the department. And with that, there is a significant amount of training that's required within the first five years to get us into a position where our specialist positions are filled, for instance, an evidence technician, juvenile officer, some of those types of positions. So we have been working very quickly to try and get some of that done. Unfortunately, NEEMER, which is our mobile training unit from the state, because of the state's cutbacks, has closed down. They're not providing us any training opportunities, so we have reached out to the Southern Law Enforcement Academy in DuPage, the College of DuPage, and are using that facility now for some of our training. Chicago Police Academy has got some courses available to us, but the ongoing continuing training that you have seen and will continue to see is relative to some of that. The other things you're seeing this year is we have hired five officers this year and are still in the process of getting them trained and out on the street.
Thank you.
Mr. Cannon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Around 5 o'clock today, we got an electronic message from Barry stating that there's a new red light cameras going on.
Just him. Just you.
Uh-huh. I guess I got one. I guess I was the only lucky guy. I'm really confused by this. In the five years that I've been around, I have no recollection of a discussion about adding any more red lights. I could be wrong, I just don't recall it. And how did all of this happen?
The, it's not necessarily a new camera at a new intersection, it's a new camera for an approach at an existing intersection. The reason that that camera hadn't been placed four or five years ago is because that's a recently reconstructed intersection, which we are required to at least get three years of data before they can put that in at that approach. That approach has been evaluated and reevaluated, and we've submitted and resubmitted a number of different permits to try and get that intersection approach only, because that intersection already has a camera at it for the westbound. This is for the northbound approach, and it was evaluated by Red Speed, I'll bet you, five years ago, and it's just taken this long. We've got a number of different locations that we have evaluated over the last six years of having the program, when part of the problem with some of those intersections is that they're county intersections, and then they've got an adjacent roadway, it's a Rolling Meadows roadway. So we're still waiting on some of those permits to come through. We also have some IDOT permits out that we've put in five or six years ago that we're still waiting on. IDOT has changed their classifications and requirements for some of those intersections from time to time, and every time they do it, it starts the process all over again. But this is, this camera is just an approach at one location of that intersection.
Okay, I appreciate the explanation, but I'm still confused, so is the explanation I'm hearing is that we might install even yet more red cameras?
Well, as the permit processes continue, I, at this point, I would probably have to say no because of what I've been getting from IDOT in our original requests. The one intersection that we still are looking very seriously at is Gulf and Wilkie, where the, we had a fatality there with a bike rider. The bike associations are very concerned with the width of that roadway and the difficulty of bikes being able to get across there all summer long to get to the bike path. That's been, you know, kind of challenged this year because of all of the construction down there, but again, we need to wait three years before we can even come up with enough data to get IDOT to even take a look at whether or not that is an approach or a location where it would be a viable place for a camera. So it's an ongoing process that does not stop in relation to some of these locations.
So, does that ever come before the council is, whether we approve them or not approve them, or is it just done?
Well, I believe it kind of sort of already has to a previous council that gave the green light, to use a bad metaphor, in this particular case.
But I'm still confused, though, so that, does that mean that in the near future, we can expect to have more red light cameras, probably?
Well, I believe Chief's answer of no is correct, because I've also heard the same thing, that they're just not approving almost every one of them that's in the works. They're just sitting on them, and that's basically because of the politics of the state. There are bills in each of the last at least two years that never go anywhere because they don't get a lot of votes, but some folks are on the warpath to say, I want to ban all red light cameras in the state of Illinois, and people who know how the game is played don't want to make people mad, and so there's, there's an, there appears to be an informal moratorium on the granting of new permits. Chief, would you consider that an accurate reflection of what you're hearing as well?
Yeah, it's difficult, not only at the state level, but also with the intersections in our county, county roads that we have. This specific one that we're talking about is a Rolling Meadows roadway, and the only thing that held this camera from being installed four or five years ago really was the, was the new construction of the intersection.
So maybe a way to summarize this, Mr. Cannon, it is possible that some further permits that were applied for years ago could still come through, but it is not likely under current conditions. Is that a sufficient answer?
Sure. Is there any way that one can voice their opposition to future ones?
Certainly. I don't know that an intersection that's already red light camera-
Oh, no, I'm talking about getting rid of them, I'm talking about adding one.
Certainly, I believe simply that comment right there in the record would mean that folks would be well advised that if a permit does get approved, a simple line of information to the council is something that's been asked for by at least one member. Is that sufficient?
That's great, thank you.
Further matters not on the agenda. Mr. Judd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just going along that, you know, Alderman Cannon's the only one to receive the email. Can you tell us what the intersection is, just so not only the rest of the council and the residents know?
It's actually, yeah, it's Kirchhoff and Plum Grove going, it's the northbound, and the reason that he got the emails because, again, it is in process, just because it was in his ward, and just in case if someone saw something different. The other good thing about it is even in our original application, it actually gives us a good sight onto Euclid, where we have numerous accidents, and without the county allowing us to put a red light where we want to put it, this will actually catch some of those accidents that we've been having, to get some additional information.
Okay, I'm fine with it, just so that everybody knows where this is going in.
Certainly. Other matters not on the agenda. I have a brief one, then. I certainly understand the desire of everyone to have as much reading time as possible for everything, but I would say that from the view of the chair, I have pushed politely sometimes and less politely other times to get advance notice of things. And so I would like to say at the end of this meeting that I appreciated getting that advance notice. Those folks who might play games like Bridge are familiar with the word contempt. Everybody's familiar with the word, but the use of it as a, you know, I'm gonna do this just because I can. Parliamentarians also use that word, and to get amendments on second reading the day of would be considered contempt and could be something that people could very easily take affront to. But the chair's position is that on first reading, it would be great to get stuff over the weekend, it would be great to get stuff on Monday, but if it's a first reading and it still gets in people's hands when there's two weeks to still maybe undo or maybe amend amendments or anything like that, I actually consider that a good thing. I appreciated that that was done. I hope that the help I offered in terms of drafting was useful, and I would always encourage folks to please follow the example of as soon as you know, maybe that can't always be over the weekend, maybe it can't always be Monday, but I consider amendments proposed anytime before the meeting of a first reading to be a good step in what I've asked, and I personally happen to appreciate it. Other matters not on the agenda. And Mr. Crumstock says staff does too. Other matters not on the agenda. Then seeing none, it is in order for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Mr. Baner has made the motion, and it has been seconded. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, the council stands adjourned.